Okay, at 7:02 PM, a motion was made by Ms. Lewis and seconded by Ms. Watt to come out of executive session. No action was taken. I hear a motion to approve the executive session minutes as read.
I make a motion to approve the executive session minutes as read.
Motion by Ms. Lewis. Seconded by Mr. Long. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Five, none opposed. Motion carries. Next item will be the approval of personnel. I hear a motion to approve the Personnel Report Number One as amended.
I move that we approve Personnel Report Number One as amended.
Motion by Ms. Finley. I hear a second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Watt. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Five, none opposed. Motion carries. Next item will be the approval of Personnel Report Number Two.
I make a motion to approve Personnel Action Report Number Two.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Long. Seconded by Ms. Lewis. Seconded by Ms. Lewis. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Four. Any opposed? One abstained. Ms. Finley?
It might be good for clarification purposes. Yeah, just abstaining.
Okay, Ms. Finley abstained due to family conflicts of interest there. So, four in favor, none opposed. Ms. Finley abstaining. Next item will be the approval of Personnel Report Number Three.
I make a motion to accept Personnel Action Report Number Three.
Motion by Ms. Lewis.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Watt. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Four. Any opposed? None. Mr. Long abstaining due to family conflicts of interest. Motion carries. Next item, approval Personnel Report Number Four. I hear a motion to approve Personnel Report Number Four.
I make a motion to approve Personnel Action Report Number Four.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Watt. Seconded by Mr. Long. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Five, none opposed. Motion carries. Next item will be superintendent reports. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Amy?
Martha just said, "Oh, she was quick." Update you on our general fund. Wow, that is really, really loud. We have collected 72.13% of our budgeted revenue as of March 2nd. On the top line there, you'll notice we're at a 90.59% collection. Just so you know where we are compared to last year, we were at 90.22% last year. So, almost exactly the same place. We've expended 52.87% of our budgeted expenditures. And I'll remind you that most of our employees are not 12-month employees, so their salaries start in September and end in August. So, we have three payrolls that are booked as of June of the coming year. So, it looks like we haven't spent as much, but keep in mind, those are on a little bit of a delay. But everybody's in line, everything looks good so far. Don't have any amendments right now for our general fund. And for our SPOS account. We collected for February $382,147.18 since SPOS revenue, earned interest of $1,785.35. We only had one check clear our account, and it was for a portion of purchase and installation of the scoreboard at Pickens High School. That brings our balance at the end of February to $9,604,733.63. Do y'all have any questions on this? And just to keep you up to date with where we are in SPOS five collections. Our 12-month, our, the past 12-month average is a little over $385,000. Still like seeing that number growing. Do y'all have any questions on SPOS or general fund at this time? That's what I have right now.
Just catch up.
Can you hear me?
There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, members of the board. Martha has the dropout information up for you to review. If you'll notice, the number is eight. The last report, we had 11. So, we have been able to, there was two seniors and I believe it was a junior 11th grade that we were able to get back in school. So, again, kudos to everybody for working hard on our dropout rate. Any questions before we move on? Okay. We'll go to the school attendance. Just a reminder, please remember last month, flu. So, when you're looking at staff attendance and student attendance, you're going to notice that our percentages were very low. Congratulations to Pickens County Middle School, Ms. Penny Fowler. Where are you, Penny?
Yay!
91.97%. So, congratulations to Pickens County Middle School and Ms. Penny Fowler. Okay. I was, I'm sorry.
What's going on? It's okay with the high school.
No. Okay. I'm sorry, I wasn't here last month, I apologize. We'll figure out who's got the banner. We'll find it. Somebody's got the banner.
All the halls apart, Shelley, when you're at.
So, I apologize. But please remember that, just to give you an update on the flu, we are looking at a couple more weeks, kind of being at the end of that, what we call the flu season. Our attendance has much improved, much better than where we were in February. So, just glad to know that our students are feeling much better and we're seeing our numbers come up. So, thanks to everybody, our nurses, all the staff, the cleaning, maintenance, I mean, everybody, bus drivers, everybody has been working so hard to make sure that the facilities have been maintained and germ-free and doing everything that we possibly could. So, hats off to everybody for the hard work. Okay, we'll now go to the staff attendance.
Yeah, I believe it was Pickens Middle School last month, so just to keep the banner.
It was? Oh, okay. Well, no wonder. So, you still keep the banner?
Yeah, if she gets this information early, she's surprised. How does she know?
Thank you, Mr. Long, for that information. Okay, Ms. Penny. That, uh-huh. Now, we know why the banner's not here. All right, now for staff attendance. Drum roll. Chris Wallace, Pickens High School. Yay, come on up.
That's amazing.
That is amazing.
94.63%. Congratulations. I know, that is three in a row.
Wow.
So, again, that's awesome.
He's not sure how he's bribing us down.
Not sure what, what he's doing, but he will tell us, so.
Gene's passes us.
Please remember that we do have some employees too that are on FMLA and things like that. So, that, that does play into staff attendance too. So, just as a reminder that, you know, it's, and the flu season, so. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Shelley. Mr. Stacy?
For a month, we've had a little bit of rain, if y'all noticed. It's, it has affected our maintenance department with roof leaks and people getting stuck in our yards and things like that. So, we put up a lot of ribbon and rope and sticks around to keep people out of the yards. The ground is just, is mush right now, so. Well, that's been a problem the whole week. We actually visited the field turf manufacturing company today to see where we were with our turf. They'll be coming next week to get started. Yeah, if you want to put them up there, it'd be good. We actually got some pictures here. That is actually our lettering, part of our lettering to go on the fields. And no, it's not in order, and yes, it doesn't look like it's spelled right, but. They're laying them out, putting them together. The turf, the field is actually manufactured already. This is just the center logo, the lettering on the ends and that kind of stuff. They cut the center logo out as we were there with a water laser cutter. We actually helped them move it to the middle of the floor and line it up and set it all together. And it's just interesting to see and to know that they're on it and they are on their way to install it, and we'll have it in in time for graduation. So, I wanted y'all to see that. Great trip to see how they do it, you know. Transportation, we did have a class this month and had two people signed up, but no one showed up for the class, so we had to cancel it. We've got the road list ready, it's been sent to several people for, for teacher, I mean, for our office staff at the schools can tell the students what schools they'll be going to, if that road is in the school district or whatever. So, they can answer questions and help us out. I think Dr. Wilson's got the letter ready yesterday or day before that we're going to be sending out to the students to let them know which school they'll be going to next year as far as middle, elementary schools. And it just affects the K-3 students at Jasper Elementary now, so it's not like we're sending them to everybody in the county. So, that's the main ones it'll be affecting. We will be, we're in the planning stages of having our bus rodeo this year. Would like for you to show up again, if you would. It'll be on April the 14th, and it will be early in the morning. We'll start about nine probably and be gone by lunch, a little after lunch, so it's not an all-day thing. But it's a great event. We do compete in the state with this, and we'll send one or two people down there. Try to send two, most time one goes. School bus evacuation drill mandatory by the state are going on this month. We'll have all those numbers in, and it's part of a report that Dr. Wilson has to sign off on, and that's coming up too real soon. SRO report this month, a couple of fights at the high school, one drug charge, two vehicle accidents on drag and drive. Had eight citations issued for parent responsibility. We had, on the K-9 searches, we did, we searched 42 vehicles at the high school and 12 classrooms. And on food service, this is, tomorrow will be the last day of National School Breakfast Week, right? So, if you hadn't eaten breakfast with us, you better get there tomorrow. You can come any day, really. That's all on the report. Lot of things going on, a lot of things we're working on, and I'll be bringing more of that to you. Met with architects yesterday and looked at a lot of stuff, so we're, we'll start planning for the next year very soon, get you guys involved. Dr. Wilson, you want me to talk about this resolution? The board members, you want me to mention this? The next item I think coming up is approval of this resolution we have to approve. And this is, in March of 2015, the board approved a resolution with the State Department of Education to close Jasper Middle School, demolish and rebuild Jasper Middle School. With the reconfiguration that we've done this year and the redistribution of students, we're going to close Jasper Middle School and not rebuild it, but have the opportunity to lease it and let law enforcement or someone like that, or even Mount Nead lease from it and get out of some of our classrooms here for Jasper Elementary School. So, this resolution had to be done this way to, for the State Department, to let us go ahead and carry on with our SPOS projects and our five-year facility plan as we go forward. So, do you want me to read this entire resolution, guys? I don't mind.
Yeah, I think they're public. I'd like to know what it says.
Okay. The resolution to not rebuild Jasper Middle School located at 339 West Church Street, Jasper, Georgia. Whereas Jasper Middle School facility located at 339 West Church Street, Jasper, Georgia will no longer be used for a K-12 school by the Pickens County school system. And whereas the Pickens County Board of Education approved new attendance zones, and whereas the Pickens County Board of Education has reconfigured Tate Elementary School to a K-4 grade facility, Harmony Elementary School to pre-K, oh, yeah, pre-K fourth grade elementary, Hill City Elementary School, pre-K, fourth grade facility, Jasper Elementary School to a fifth and sixth grade facility, which will be named Jasper, Jasper Middle School, Pickens Middle School to a seventh and eighth grade facility, which will be named Pickens Junior High School. And whereas the Pickens County Board of Education intends to lease Jasper Middle School, the 1604 state building number located at 339 West Church Street, Jasper, Georgia. Be it therefore resolved, the Pickens County Board of Education will not build a new Jasper facility, middle school facility located at 339 West Church Street, Jasper, Georgia. It's a, it's a, this is a cleaning up of language for the State Department of Education. If we decide next year we won't tear it down and build one there, we'll have to do another resolution. Just part of what we have to do.
I just wanted to see if you could read that.
It was hard. Martha and I wrote it, but I couldn't see it.
One other quick thing. The, other than the color red, change that color to black. This is the track. So, this is going to be at the high school, and it's going to be in black. But this is the quality of the surface. And this is the, which you can't see, but this is the turf that's actually going down with the cool, cool dry substance in place of sand, which lowers the temperature by 35 degrees on field. So, then we want to see the turf is here. And with that, that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Next will be action items. I hear a motion to approve the signing of the resolution to not rebuild Jasper Middle School at the 339 West Church Street location.
I move that we, that the board chairman signs the resolution not to rebuild Jasper Middle School on West Church Street.
Motion by Ms. Finley.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Long. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Five, none opposed. Motion carries. Next, Dr. Wilson, the central records. Do you want to discuss that? Patrick, you want to briefly tell us about our central records?
It would be my pleasure. About three and a half years ago, we began central registration, pulling it out of the schools in an attempt to clean up all the data entry. That's gone along, I think, fabulously, however, it's, it's a lot of work bottlenecking in one area. When Dr. Wilson came on board this year, he tasked us with making a strong push to go digital when it came to cumulative records for students because, you know, over age, you know, we run into a lot of different issues. So, over the last few months, I've been listening to a lot of demonstrations and, you know, people telling me, you know, that their product hangs the moon. And we found one that does not only, and a lot of people have one solution or another, they have a really strong data management, online records thing with metadata and all this kind of stuff that you can search and, you know, we can audit all central records, does away with the vaults at the school, puts the cumulative record at the hands and the fingertips of the teachers when they log in, and they can see it, and it's very secure. On the same token, there's a lot of companies out there that'll do an online registration for us, but there wasn't a company that did both. We found Registration Gateway, and everything's under Gateway with them. And what they do is they take everything from the online registration piece all the way through the central records piece. So, as this teacher, or excuse me, as the principal, as the parents, begin the registration process, they have the ability to upload their own documents, completely do the registration forms, not make an appointment until that's all completed. Once that's done, come visit us, we approve all their documents, we say that it's okay, place them in a school, and all that information, once approved, goes directly into our student information system. When that happens, the perm record is automatically created, and then as we place a student in a classroom, all the security rights are handled for them. So, teachers have immediate access to any of the online stuff that is uploaded at that point in time. The other piece of this is once all that, once we create all of these online records, we have the ability to turn around and deliver to our parents digital information as well. Online report cards, transcripts, progress reports. We don't have to print those out. Now, we still have the ability to do that if parents want that as well, but, you know, how much of the stuff now do we, do we hand them and, you know, they don't want to see it. You know, they do, but they don't want to keep it. So, it, it becomes part of the perm record. We don't have to worry about storage, and we don't have to worry about any of the purging, and we can set up all the different rules and regulations around what records we keep, what records we don't keep. Also, this time of the year is very popular for parents to contact us and ask us for copies of the birth certificates because of ball season. We've become central records keeper for them as well. And that's fine, the information's stored in the student information system or in the perm record at the school, but we end up having to go out and retrieve that and make a copy for the parent and stuff like that. Once digitized, then we can give parents the rights to see their own documents. You know, we can still keep ownership with it in the system, but they have the rights to see those and print those off and that kind of stuff. With that also comes, how many of us have students and dread the first aid packet with all those different forms that get sent home because the nurse wants a form, the bus people want a form, the PTA wants a form, we got to sign the code of conduct, we got to sign up for A and S P, all those other things, and they're all the same document, the same student, the same telephone numbers, all that other stuff. This program allows us not only to do the registration piece, but also open up that online, so the parents can do all that first aid packet stuff once, and we can get a digital signature, and then we can keep up with who hasn't done that, who hasn't turned in their code of conduct, who hasn't updated their demographic information. So, it automatically keeps that record for us. So, when Dr. Wilson says, "Well, how are we at Pickens Middle? Did they turn in all their paperwork?" We can say, "Yes," and we have proof that every student in the system has done something. Now, we still have, you know, those options of, "Well, what about those families without Internet?" They might not have a computer at home, but this is available also on, on an app as well. So, it works on phones and tablets and all that other fun stuff. So, we can make it available in, you know, our central registration, parents can come and use that. We can set up kiosks at the schools if they want to visit the school, any time, any place where they can get a web browser, library, they can, you know, they can update their information from there. And those ones that won't do it and want handwritten copies, we can provide those as well. But, you know, as we move down this, to a completely digital world, scary as it may be, you know, that's, that's the way things are now. You buy a house, everything's done by PEO signer, and, you know, you don't really sign a contract until you very, sit down at the last minute. So, what, what I found through all the written was this Registration Gateway does all this and more. There's also an HR piece that does some onboarding for them. I talked to our nutrition department. It can incorporate the free and reduced application during the registration process, and it feeds directly into our system or into their system, however they want, and they just approve it. That's always a big struggle, getting those applications back. I think we might get accurate numbers, if we provide them a safe, secure way to do that at home instead of having those forms go back and forth. Sometimes they get lost in backpacks or just not turned in. The, and it is, this is a costly, costly project. Most of the student information's packages that I looked at that came to central registrations are in the area of $5 to $6 a student. And then on top of that, a registration package, you know, would be another $2 to $3 on top of that. So, it becomes costly even at a district our size, and those are yearly renewable costs because we are uploading it and maintaining servers and security and all the software updates and all that other fun stuff. Gateway has agreed to work with us and allow us to do a setup in what they call a trial, you know, to get us through the last part of this year. Instead of having our, all of our renewals and everything, you know, priced now, we would, then, we would get through the end of this year, get all of our setup done, and then we would go live July 1. And then we would not have to wait until July 1 to start the whole process because it's going to take six to eight weeks to get all of our processes online and lined up for, for this to go. I'm not sure if we'll be able to do away with the first aid packet this year, but that is the goal. The registration will be our primary focus to get that up and running first, and then the digital records repository, and then open it up to parents online. Parents won't have to learn a parent portal and a gateway. We can merge the two, it can be a single sign-on, so that when they log into one, they can immediately get to the grades of the other. And then also through that digital repository, we can give them access to records we want. And it can be used for anything. Dr. Wilson would like to know, you know, what's internet connection like at home? Who's your provider? How, you know, what kind of download speeds do you have? We can send out a survey, and it comes back, and we know it's tied to which school, which classroom, which teacher, that kind of stuff. So, that doesn't have to flow in any campus. You know, we could create fields for it, but it could, but we have that ability because all that information's stored in our student information system and just couples right together. So, what I'm asking for is approval of this purchase and moving forward.
Any other questions? What kind of cost are we looking at here coming out through the rest of this year? Is it going to be a cost now?
It's going to be a cost now through the, through June 30th, and all the, and that will include all the setup costs. So, it's $16,000 through the end of this year. Going forward, it works out to $5, $4 to $5 a student, depending on our, so you're looking at a renewal cost of $20,000 a year, and that's for both the central records and the central registration piece.
Did you look at the comparison cost of the actual paper processing? Because when y'all get that packet of paper back in, somebody has to key that in. I mean, that's, there's a cost associated with that, so it may not be.
Man-hours.
Exactly. It may not be, this $20,000 you're talking about may not be as, look as large if you compare it to the actual cost of processing the paper.
The cost of printing as well.
And the cost of printing.
Tremendous amount of paper.
We're looking at turning, I don't know, sure what. Any other questions?
What kind of cost are we looking at here coming out through the rest of this year? Is it going to be a cost now?
It's going to be a cost now through the, through June 30th, and all the, and that will include all the setup costs. So, it's $16,000 through the end of this year. Going forward, it works out to five, four to five dollars a student, depending on our, so you're looking at a renewal cost of $20,000 a year, and that's for both the central records and the central registration piece.
Did you look at the comparison cost of the actual paper processing? Because when y'all get that packet of paper back in, somebody has to key that in. I mean, that's, there's a cost associated with that, so it may not be-
Man-hours. Man-hours.
Exactly. It may not be, this $20,000 you're talking about may not be as, look as large if you compare it to the actual cost of processing the paper.
And we have-
The cost of printing as well.
And the cost of printing.
Tremendous amount of paper.
We're looking at turning, I don't know, sure what we pay every year for the code of conduct. How much does that bill? Shelley? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm asking $8,500. You know, so, we wouldn't have to print as many. We'd still print some for those parents that want a hard copy, but it could be a link that they would then approve. So, there's benefits across the board, and I do know that for the first month and a half, we're combing through all those papers that come in, and we're marking whether or not students can have their pictures taken, whether or not they're, you know, are they riding the bus this year in emergency, or are they not riding the bus this year in emergency? Who's the emergency contacts this year? That, that all gets hand-entered at this point in time. Yeah, we transpose some numbers occasionally, but, you know, it's a lot, you know, so.
Can it generate reports with that information? Like, if I'm Ms. Smith or Ms. Jones, I can print out that information for my class?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And you said it was about an eight dollar, currently about an eight dollar per student?
We have, we're basically-
On what we're doing now as compared to the four to five dollars?
If we were to go out and buy separate pieces, it would be about eight dollars a student. It would be one particular one that we are playing around with, that we've entered into a tentative agreement with. The renewal cost would be $21,000 for 4,400 students. And with that solution, though good, if we ever break the contract, we would have to buy our data back. So, this company, the agreement is, it's our data, we own it. If we were to ever walk away with it for them, for whatever reason, we would retain our, our own documents.
Are you asking for the current cost?
Yeah, I think it's, and it's very similar to what you were saying, and I think you'd say there's like a-
Five dollars, five dollars a student.
Five dollars, about three dollars.
And then, three dollars if we were to buy an online registration piece.
Right now, we still do everything.
Right now, we do everything manually.
And I guess, just to add on to what Byron already asked, is it, is it someone going to wash out what we're currently doing? How would it affect the budget? How would it affect the budget as compared to what we're doing now? What would we see as far as ease up on that side being replaced with this side?
Not knowing how many man-hours we actually are putting into all that data entry, because it's done in so many different locations, you know, because your food service, your free and reduce goes to them, and they'll have two or three people working on that the first several weeks of the year. Every school, which the data clerks used to be at the schools, and now, you know, they've been moved to technology in the central office, everybody's entering data, so I don't know how many hours it takes to get all that data in, and then all the updates through the year.
I know, I work between 80 to 100 hours in July, just to get ready for school, along with my main data person. It takes us for every, every registration, last year we had over 300, from middle of July to the beginning of school. It takes probably 30 to 45 minutes, and then you add multiple students on top of that to a family. It could take upwards of 45 minutes to an hour for every student that we have to enter. And this year, we've not only done that, we've also taken the data clerks completely out of the schools, and now we also do central, not only central registration, but we also do central scheduling as well. So, I'm looking at it from a very selfish standpoint of view, because I can spend more of my time scheduling than actually data entry, because at this point in time, everybody hands on board with data, and they're doing data entry, trying to get ready for day one and getting those kids enrolled, because they can't schedule.
It's the parents in charge of the data entry.
The parents in charge, getting the information. A lot of times, they show up with, with the documents they need, without the documents they need. This allows them to spend their time, get it, get it entered, and then schedule an appointment.
If you could defray at least some of the cost for the student code of conduct, you're talking $8,000 to $8,500, the goal would be to hopefully eventually go down to just purchasing either a few copies or just providing a link. I mean, there's a chunk, that's almost half what it would cost, between that and paper costs and labor hours.
And then the day one.
We're well on our way to recouping that. And do remember that we reduced our data clerks by one this past year, one or two? We just did one, didn't we?
Oh, yeah, two.
Yep. So, we've already reduced that staff, because it was streamlined, so this is another way to help streamline it further. Not seeing one? Nobody's going to get that. But, it is a way to, you know, as, as you begin to go to more of a digital format, and Patrick and I have talked about this quite a bit, because the first quote he brought me, y'all didn't get to see, was in excess of $40,000 for a program that did not do both pieces that he's talking about. So, I was very happy that he brought this one.
Infiniti Campus, who does the student information system, does have an online registration piece. However, it has to be done within our own network, and, you know, that's an excess of $10,000, just so they could write an interface for their own program.
But, this one will, you can get-
Does everything we need.
Okay, great.
And creates the digital perm record immediately.
So, our savings is not going to be instantaneous, but that's, you know, if we can get it, the more we can get it in place before school starts, the more money we could potentially save, and you're taking away a lot of tedious data entry for a lot of staff members.
And we're, we're well ahead of the curve. For the last three years, we've been doing the central registration. We have three years of scan data already stored, waiting to put somewhere.
Should also take a load off the teachers, having to pass all this information out on the first day of school.
For sure. And keep track of this return.
And collecting it.
Yeah. Who hasn't turned it in? And then calling up parents and harassing them for it.
Going in and out of the ball, making sure that they returned all their key folders.
We'll have parental support, I'm sure, but you follow, they have to give us go and review their file every year instead of keying all of that back in for each student.
I have another question, because I know in this time, that, you know, with all of the data breaches and things that are going on, how, what do they, what are their security measures? We're keeping our student data safe.
Their Department of Defense contracts. So, they not only are Department of Defense-level security, they also have the nuclear blast radius, so they have their main data centers in Pennsylvania, and the other one is far enough away that if there was a nuclear blast, they wouldn't be affected. And then, their primary customer after education is the Department of Defense. So, they're willing to provide all the certificates that we would ask for.
And are they cloud-based?
This one is a cloud-based. There is an online, or we could take it in-house, though it would incur not only the cost of servers and server updates and server upkeep and that kind of stuff. So, when you, when you look at the automatic backups, the server requirements and the long-term storage, there's a slight increase. However, it takes the, the, I would say, the pressure off of us to make sure that that is, no one gets there are firewalls. They would have to get through their firewalls as well. And it is an option, we could bring it in-house, but that can be a discussion. Right now, it's, both options are on the table.
This has the ability to, all of our old records-
Yes.
We can scan and-
Yes, there's a, there's two major closets at the high school, and both of them are completely full of file and filing cabinets in the Fire Kings that takes a couple of people to move, and they're completely, completely full.
We can get rid of those? I mean, we can upload that information?
We could upload them all, upload it all.
I'm in.
Yes, we could upload it all. And that would be, you know, that's a full-time job right there, is, once we get through registration, then we attack grade levels, because teachers are going to want all of their records available too. I can honestly say, second, although kindergarten through second would probably automatically be available within the first month of us going live with the digital records, because we have that for the last three years.
If you've ever had to look for somebody who graduated in 1936, you would totally appreciate it.
And we get some, we get some very, very strange requests about, you know, proving that they were here during certain years, what their attendance was, what their grades were, because now, some, some people are going back to college, or they're trying to qualify for different things, or disability, and yes.
When they were born.
Uh-huh. We've been asked for, for birth certificates, you know, someone, it's $25 at the courthouse, but they call us and we provide it, when we have clean copies. So, and I can honestly say that over the last three years, since we've been doing this digitally and doing the scanning and doing that other stuff, our quality of data has increased tremendously. We can read social security cards, we can read birth certificates, we can read all that stuff that used to just be thrown through a scan, or copied, and they'd forget to close the lid, and, you know, all the faces would be blocked out, because you couldn't, you know, too much light. So, our, our quality of data has greatly improved, so. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, did I hear a approval for the purchase of the central records online registration portal?
I make a motion that we approve the purchase of the central records online registration portal.
Motion by Mr. Long. Your second.
I'll second.
Second to Ms. Finley. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Five, none opposed. Motion carries. Next will be a request for approval of amendment to FY 18 budget.
I emailed y'all seven attachments, and I'm sure y'all were so happy to see this, because it's all numbers. I believe it was probably 40 to 50 pages of data, but I did want you to have a good picture of what I'm asking at this point, or the superintendent is asking. If you recall when we did the budget for FY 18, most of our federal grants did not, had not given us our final number for this year's grant money. A long time ago, we would receive this money, this information in either February or March, so it was easy to incorporate with the budget. Now, they don't do that. So, we're at their mercy, but we have to, we know we're going to get certain amounts, we know it should be, we'll get a number, oh, you'll get over $800,000, but we don't have that exact number, so we do have to budget something, we have to tell y'all what it is, y'all see all that information. But, times are changing, and as we go through the year, we do get those final numbers, and we have to enter the information into what's called a consolidated application, and this is a Georgia Department of Education website, I guess you could say. So, there's lots of information that goes in. Anything that is required for that federal grant is entered into it, like Patrick's saying, you're scanning information in, quite often, it gets scanned in or saved as a PDF, and we don't even have a paper copy anymore, it's loaded into the clip during the year. In different areas, we have six grants that this amendment is about. One is Title I, that is the biggest one. Y'all see there are 20 pages of detail in this particular grant, and it is actually for improving academic achievement. This one is the most complicated one, and as you see, by the description beside each dollar, we have to allot it by function code, object code, price, how many units in total, and then a description. So, you can see, this is not something that is taken lightly. It takes probably two months to get this, this particular one done in the beginning. Then, during the year, if you had any excess money left over last year that is applicable to be carried over into this year, you have an amendment that comes in. So, you've entered it, and you get approval from two people at the Georgia Department of Education. You get an amendment, you get, you have to do it again, two more. Every change that happens with these federal grants has to be entered through the consolidated application, and you must get their approval before you can spend the money. This is the process. So, in the past, we've done this during the year, and we just kept spreadsheets here. We didn't go in and change the budget, we didn't amend it to match all these changes, because we used to have the information up front, and it usually didn't change very much. Now, it does. So, what they have strongly recommended, and since we're having a federal monitoring this year, they have strongly recommended that we represent the information to you with the correct numbers at this moment and get your approval, so we can enter it into our budget, so when we pull our budget report, we're not using a spreadsheet, we're not having to go somewhere else, we're putting the account number in, and it prints the report for us. When they strongly recommend that we do something, we like to be on their good side, so that's what we're doing. This is a lot of work, but it, it does help. I will say, when it comes to organization, you're not having to keep a separate spreadsheet, it's in there, but I can already tell you, I have two amendments after this that are going to happen before the end of this year. So, it is an ongoing changing thing, but this is where we're headed. New rules that came into place July 1 of last year under ESSA rules changed the game, and so we're now trying to participate and play nice. So, this is what we're asking for, is to amend these six grants, and it's Title I academic, improvement of academic achievement. Title II is a HQ, and now it's not HQ, it's PQ, which is a highly qualified staff or professionally qualified staff. We have Title IV, which is a new grant that I'm actually going to make sure I tell you the right name for. I know how much the grant is, but it's funny, I don't know the name. Student Support and Academic Enrichment. Then, we have what is called 6B, which is our IDEA flow-through grant, so that's our special education. We have a federal pre-K IDEA grant, and then we have, we are the fiscal agent for GLRS, and it is an IDEA grant too. All of these are involved in our cross-functional monitoring, this coming up later this month. So, do y'all have questions about this? What you actually see in your packet is a one-page thing. This is the state form. The items that are going to change are in bold italics, and of course, the revenue is going to change too, because the revenue must match the expenditures for these federal grants. Keep in mind, in this column for special revenue, we also have SPOSS, food service, some different things. The only things we have changed here are for these six federal grants. We did not touch one penny in general fund, we didn't touch SPOSS, we didn't touch food service. So, just, this is just these six grants. So, if y'all don't have any questions.
The information you sent was quite enlightening.
I'm sorry.
Overwhelming. It was extremely overwhelming.
I'm sorry.
I shouldn't ask you to repeat that.
Well, I didn't read the email, so, but writing the emails, y'all, was, was kind of fun, but trying to take, it is a huge amount of information to explain, and we have a multitude of people who handle these things. So, when you're trying to explain something that covers, each grant is so different, and even in the monitoring we were talking about today, that different monitors in different areas require different things, and they're not just a little bit different. This one wants you to have copies of this and have the, you have to meet all these requirements. So, it's, this is my red tape money. This is that, you know, we talk about, some stuff has so much red tape, this is red tape money, but it is very beneficial to the system. It's worth all the work that we have to put in to get the money, because we can provide services that you cannot pay for out of general fund. This is that supplementary money, it helps do things we can't normally do. So, we want the money, of course, so we're going to go, we're going to jump through the hoops, and we're going to go through all the red tape. But, this is part of it, so if you need any more detail about these grants, I will be-
You did a really good job explaining it, because it was, it was very complicated, and I was able to actually understand what you were talking about.
And I run it by other people who don't do what I do, to say, "Does this make sense? You know, do you understand what I'm saying?" Martha's one of them, she helps me. I say, "If it's my geeky number stuff, tell me, and I'll, I'll do better," but I hope, I hope you did. Please don't hesitate to ever call and ask me, emailing.
We appreciate you sending that information, or we'd have been sitting here tonight without a clue what you're talking about.
It's just, I just hated to send y'all so much, but it, it's a lot, but, but it, this is what will be monitored on. This is, this is a huge piece of what will be monitored on. You would not believe the documentation that we have to provide.
Well, don't hesitate to send it if we need to see it.
Yes, so, that's coming up on the 21st, so we're a little bit of a flurry, flurry of activity getting ready. I don't know if Christie's here. Especially, we have a brand, brand-new special ed director who's going to get to join the fun, you know, she just came to us. So, she wasn't involved in creating this year's, but she gets to be the one involved. So, we've done some educating very quickly. So we've done some educating very quickly. But everybody's been great about it too, so.
Okay. Thank you. I'll make the motion to approve the amendment to the FY 18 budget to meet these strong recommendations under the federal guidelines as presented.
I'll second.
Motion by myself, seconded by Ms. Lewis. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Five, oh, motion carries. Next will be approval of minutes for the February 8th regular board meeting. I hear a motion.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes of the February 8th board made, board meeting as presented.
Motion by Ms. Lewis.
I'll second.
Second to Ms. Finley. Is there any discussion? No discussion, all in favor? Five, none opposed, motion carries. Next item, the board comments. The board comments.
I would like to make one pretty quick personal announcement. As hard as it is to make the decision to run for the board, it is also equally hard to make the decision to quit. But I have made that decision, and so I will not run for reelection. I appreciate your support. And that's all I can say.
Any other comments?
Well, I guess I'll make a comment. As disappointed as I was when Daniel announced that he was not going to run for reelection, I am equally disappointed that Delane is not going to run for reelection. They both bring a lot of experience and expertise, and we will miss them very much.
I agree. Feel a little lost.
I'm not sure I'll make still a little bit of a 50 dollar.
But on another note, at 6 o'clock in the morning, I'm going to go to Nuna to see the birth of my first great grandchild.
Well, I did want to make, the groups that went to the E T C Ignite, we had Tracy Bogingham win $10,000 with her proposal with her. I was very, very happy to see that, I know she worked so hard for our students, so that was really neat, and Dr. Fullman too, with his group too, that, they represent Pickens County, Pickens County very well. We got that, that texter in the middle of our star playbook, which also was amazing to see because, you know, we got, we get this here, some, some stuff that's not very happy to hear sometimes, and we get to hear all of the things that make us pause and not be happy. But when we go to these type of functions and we see the amazing students that we produce in our county, it makes me so proud. And then to see, get that text in the middle of something that was already so wonderful to attend was a really neat thing, and I'm happy to be part of a system that produces such good students. So thank you to all the people here and the teachers and the staff that work so hard for our kids.
I would have been happy with Dr. Fullman's $500. Tracy hadn't have gotten the $10,000, my goodness. I would, I would love to hear their proposals, to hear-
We'd plan on having them.
I was going to say, we'd be neat to see it our morning the next time because it looked really neat what we could see.
Well, I would say thanks to the administrators and everybody from the schools who invited us out for the re across America. It is so much fun to do that. So much fun. So I appreciate that. Everybody should do it. Everybody should do it.
Okay, next item is to adjourn. I hear everybody to adjourn.
I would be glad to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Long. Second to Ms. White. Any discussion? Done, all in favor? Five, none opposed, motion carries. We're adjourned.